Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. Scouts, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Dazies, you know the Pledge of Allegiance, right? You do it at school every day. The flag's in the corner, so we should all turn and face the flag.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republicans' wishes. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Any additions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
First on the agenda is a proclamation that I have for the Girl Scouts. And I'd like to read that for you, okay? This is a proclamation on the importance of the all-girls space offered by the Girl Scouts. Whereas the year 2020 marks the 108th anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA, the largest and most successful leadership program for girls in the world. And whereas Girl Scouts unleashes the GIRL, go-getter, innovator, risk-taker, and leader in every girl, preparing her for a lifetime of leadership. And whereas Girl Scouts combines time-tested, research-backed methods with existing modern programming that speaks to today's girls and is designed to cater to the strengths of girls' leadership development. And whereas Girl Scouts offers girls 21st century programming in science, technology, engineering, and math, otherwise known as STEM, the outdoors, entrepreneurship, and beyond, helping girls develop invaluable life skills and take the lead early and often. And whereas as the world's premier leadership development organization for girls, Girl Scouts welcomes girls of all backgrounds and interests who want to develop the courage, confidence, and character to make the world a better place. And whereas research shows that girls learn best in an all-girl, girl-led environment in which their specific needs are addressed and met. And whereas the Girl Scout Gold Award, the highest and most prestigious award in Girl Scouting, calls on Girl Scouts in grades 9 through 12 to take on projects that have a measurable and sustainable impact on a community by first assessing a need, designing a solution, completing a project, and inspiring others to sustain it. And whereas with more than 100 years of experience, Girl Scouts bring a wealth of knowledge to programs that deliver girls cornerstone experiences with benefits that last a lifetime. And whereas today, more than 50 million women are Girl Scout alums and 2.6 million girls and adults are current members. Now therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Durham, by virtue of the authority vested, do hereby applaud the Girl Scout Movement and Girl Scouts of Connecticut for providing girls with a safe, inclusive, all-girls space where they can hone their skills and develop leadership qualities. And we declare the week of March 8th through March 14th to be Girl Scout Week. Signed Laura L. Francis for Selectmen, John T. Shewshitz Selectmen, George M. Eames, the fourth Selectmen, on this day, the ninth day of March 2020. So, this is for you all. Do you want to come up here for a picture?
So, Dazies, if you just slide right in the front and juniors and cadets work around because you are the tallest, so we can go in the back towards Mrs. Francis. If you are a Daisy, stand right here where my hands are. Dazies, in a line, facing me. Someone's going to take a picture from this side, so face me. Come over here. And then Brownies, don't be afraid, Mrs. Francis is really nice. You're going to slide right over here. Danico, why don't you come down closer? Donna, take a little step in.
Someone up front in the middle, why don't you hold that together?
Come on over there. Very nice.
Laura, do they have cookies with them or not?
But I will note, that's what I had for dinner tonight. What? Thank you, ladies. And whose birthday is Thursday, March 12?
Addie's is actually.
Yours?
Well, so she has courses to prepare.
The same day as Juliette? No.
I'll take that. Thank you very much. Will you say, "Girls"? So we are going to really quickly and quietly find our adult humans in our jacket. It's my jacket. Girls, we're going to really quietly file out what the rest of the meeting has to add.
Is there any public comment? Simone?
Good evening. I'm Simone Howe. I'm a chairperson of the Ethics Commission. I'm glad I did not attend the meeting of January 27th. I understand that was very interesting. And more than once I've made this suggestion. There was a lot of, apparently, conflict, a lot of stress that I heard about in a subsequent Board of Education, Board of Selectmen meeting. And it seems to me that public officers, officials, and employees of the Town of Durham do not understand the written code of ethics. Because I think, excuse me, a lot of the stress has been avoided. There's a very simple definition of giving your favors. And I recommended before that anyone who is a public official, officer, or employee of the town should be asked to read and sign a paper saying that they have read this once a year, every third year, every three years at least, but more often. Because too many people, it seems, did not know what this code of ethics contained. Thank you.
Thank you, Simone. Any other public comment? Roger?
Got to add one thing to the Girl Scouts, by the way, in case you guys don't know it from their marketing campaign, is that you can actually donate money to the campaign to send boxes of cookies to the military. So we have a young lady who rides at our farm. And I'm telling you, it is the coolest thing in the world when she is collecting for cookies. Most of the people give the money to the military and don't even care about getting the cookies. So just to add that to the Girl Scouts, what they're doing, whoever marketed that, makes it incredible.
That's good.
Kudos to the Girl Scouts.
Any other public comment? Chuck?
Yes, during Selectmen Commons, I'm hoping that the Selectmen will address public health issues going on with coronavirus. The extensive cleaning that I think the activity center probably on deck because that's where the most vulnerable residents get to.
Yeah, I'll have that in my update. Any other public comment? Okay, then we'll go on to the Complete Streets presentation.
Hi, everybody. Most people here are in our group, so you know me. But for those who don't, I'm Leslie Bullion. I live here in Durham. I've been a resident of Durham since '92. Six years before that, I was in Middlefield. So I've been around a while. And we formed the Complete Streets Action Group as an offshoot of Sustainable Durham, which I serve on. So I sent our conceptual plan. We've been working on it. We first made a resolution, which was very kindly passed by the Board of Selectmen to make Complete Streets a priority in town. And we've been working on a conceptual plan with a timeframe to kind of try to hook into the work that's going on in Main Street. Because if you dovetail with work that's going on on streets, you can get a lot done very cheaply or at the cost of the state. And that's what we're trying to do. So just for those who don't know, Complete Streets are roadways that enable safe and convenient access for all users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, and motor vehicle drivers of all ages and abilities, including children, seniors, and individuals with disabilities. So why do we care about Complete Streets? Well, I'm going to give you some of the main points of why this is important from the website BikeWalkConnecticut. Complete Streets is a national movement, probably an international movement, but certainly nationally and in the state of Connecticut and many cities and towns have enacted Complete Streets resolutions, policies, and plans. And that's what we are working towards, which is also a big piece of the Sustainable Connecticut goals that we're trying to meet as a community. So why do we want to have Complete Streets? Well, first of all, it's good for the economy. Because if you have a walkable, bikeable community, you bring people into town, you keep people in the business area of town, it increases real estate value, especially along trails and other places where people can bike. It increases retail sales in pedestrian and bike-friendly zones and attracts and retains millennials who don't want to own cars or who want to bicycle, commute, or otherwise recreate and shop without having to be in the car all the time. It's also biking and walking, zero emissions, so an obvious win for the environment. It's good for health because you're getting people out in a more active kind of transportation. When you do your infrastructure with the idea of Complete Streets in mind, you are enhancing the safety in your community as well. You are keeping people out and on the roads and on the streets in a way where they can interact with each other. So number one, safety is you get to know your neighbors better if you're out and about. So your community is more vibrant because people are out and using the streets. I'll talk very briefly about our phases in our plan, but one of the things is road calming kinds of techniques. And what we are proposing does also include that, which makes for safer roads. You have more eyes out on the street and you have more people using the roads with alternate means of transportation. So people who are in cars get more used to seeing bicycles and pedestrians, and that makes it safer for everybody. So that's, you know, kind of the why of Complete Streets. There's a national Complete Streets Coalition called Smart Growth America. There's a national bill now in front of the Senate and the House, which is, you know, sort of waiting in committee. But it's the Complete Streets Act of 2019, and it requires 5% of existing highway funds to be set aside for Complete Streets projects. It creates a statewide program to award the money and provide technical support for that and adopts design standards that support safer Complete Streets. So that's on the national level. On the state level, BikeWalkConnecticut has raised Bill 5324. The provisions for that include safer crosswalks for pedestrians, support for municipalities to set their own speed limits instead of having to apply to the state to change speed limits slower, support for fines and charges for cell phone violations, use of cell phones, which is going to get a lot more expensive when this gets passed. Also, a dooring law, so that it's actually illegal with a fine to open your door into somebody who's riding a bicycle by. Forty-one states already have that law. We're one of only nine states that don't have that. And then there's also support for, there's a greenways commemorative account, and they want to make sure that those monies are being used to create greenways in the towns. So, you know, I know we're thinking a lot about the virus and that public health crisis, but there also is a public health crisis of pedestrians and bicyclists being struck on roads. And that between 2008 and 2017, drivers struck and killed almost 50,000 people who were walking on streets all across the United States, which is more than 13 people a day, or one person every hour and 46 minutes. And then, on top of that, between 2017 and 2018, which is the most recent data I have, pedestrian mortality is up 20% beyond that. So, you know, we've had some experience with this in our town. We invite thousands of people to come to this town to participate in the Durham Fair. We like to have people come and use some of the other nice areas that we have in this town. But we need to improve our infrastructure so it's safer. Also, bicycle and auto collisions. I think many of us know that, you know, some of our neighbors have been hit by cars riding their bicycles on our town roads. They're very dangerous, and we'd like to see those things be improved. So we worked on a Complete Streets conceptual plan and looking at some of the principles in the town's plan of conservation and development that was drawn up. And we know we want to have a more vibrant downtown. We want to have a walkable, bikeable community to draw people in. We want to connect Main Street and the town center and the historic district to other recreational areas. And it's good for the health of Main Street businesses. So as per the resolution that we passed here in July of 2018, we are asking now to have support of the Board of Selectmen, as also in their role as traffic authority, to be looking forward and always taking advantage of opportunities to make Complete Streets improvements ongoing as part of the roadwork and other opportunities that raise themselves here in town, to review Complete Streets Plan objectives yearly, which I'm going to get to the plan in one minute, and make them part of our infrastructure, development infrastructure, part of planning and showing considerations going forward, and make sure that we don't miss opportunities for Complete Streets innovations and considerations. I feel that, you know, we had some improvements that went through before we were really up and running with Complete Streets, and we'd missed some opportunities there already. I'd like to make sure that we don't, you know, miss any others to make roads safer for bicycles and pedestrians as well as the cars that we're all stuck in all the time. So, don't get me wrong.
No, off point. You talk.
Okay, okay. Great. Teen more. So we sort of have divided this up into phases. And Phase 1 is the thing that's, you know, under some bit of time pressure because we're trying to dovetail with all of the work that's going on on Main Street. And we had the idea to make a bike lane on both sides of Main Street. We have found, we engaged with the town, Nathan Jacobson and Associates, Brian Curtis, did a lot of work for us, tremendous work, measuring and finding out what all the state requirements are, how wide the roads have to be. And found that Main Street is, in fact, wide enough all the way down the lane from Haddon Quarter Road all the way down to the split of 79 and 77. It's wide enough to have bike lanes on both sides. There were a couple of small areas where it's not quite wide enough. But Brian worked very, and many of us actually met with Department of Transportation. Brian worked really closely with Kevin Campbell at DOT. And we were told that because we have these, you know, maybe a little area here and there that might be too narrow, they're fine with it. And so we actually have the preliminary okay to go ahead and do this. So when the road is finally repaved and restriped, they can restripe it with an 11-foot-wide travel lane on either side, which is substantially narrower than what we have now.
One foot narrow.
One foot narrower.
Not, not great long.
Well, on each side, though, right?
Yeah, I know. Just one foot.
Okay. But in terms of, thank you. It gives more room for bicycles, and it gets us to this idea of road diet, which is really important for a traffic calming issue and has been shown that if you sort of take away a little bit of the travel area, people are more careful with their cars because they have the perception that they're not on the road anymore. So they'll drive more slowly. And it's safer for the bicyclists and safer for the cars, and also better for our town to not have people speeding through. The posted speed limit is 30, which is also acceptable for having a bike lane, according to the DOT. And that would encourage people to go at the travel-safe speeds. So along with that, we've considered as part of Phase 1 what the board of selectmen already has underway, which is the sidewalk on the west side of Main Street, which in our, this is a conceptual plan, so it's kind of like a wish list. DOT told us to put everything in this plan that we would like to see happen. They'll let us know if it's feasible, if they will approve it. And then, it doesn't mean we have to do it. It means that we can do it if we raise the funds for it and if we, you know, find that we can do it in a cost-effective way. This painting on Main Street would be done by the DOT, so that would be helpful. We would be responsible for painting the decals of the bicycles. And there's a certain periodicity to how much you have to, how frequently you have to paint those. There's a cost estimate, which I think is in, I may have had it in here, and I think Ryan had it in his report too. But Martin Anderson had a meeting with John Jenkins, and, you know, we've also had information back and forth with John Jenkins. And we have significant cost-saving opportunities if we use the town road crews to do some of this work. So we have to figure out with DOT what the town can do versus what they have to do and which kind of paint we need to use and all of these things. But it should be doable. And then we would need a certain amount of signage of showing that this is a bike lane, and we're responsible for painting for the signs as well. And we'd like to eventually see the sidewalk finished on both sides.
The sidewalks, if anybody can see, are the red indications.
In red on the map, yeah. And ideally, we'd like to see improvements in the crosswalks, especially the places where it's not at a traffic light, so the traffic's not stopped eventually. Our, you know, wish list plan is to get those push-button, solar-powered flashers so that it's more visible there. One of the provisions of the state law, I believe, is that they want to go back to the way it was in 2007, which is that you don't actually have to be in the crosswalk to be indicating that you're crossing. You can be standing on the side and, well, pushing a button would be the best thing. But people will be required by law to stop, which right now, apparently, they're not unless you can prove that you were, like, into the crosswalk already, which is very dangerous. So that's something that we're hoping will change. And if people are interested in this, they should send a letter or call our Congresspeople and let them know, or state Congresspeople, and let them know that you are interested in that. So that's Phase 1 of the Main Street, the bike lane and improving the crosswalks and the sidewalks. Including, and I think DOT is going to do this one, the crosswalk that crosses Picket Lane that also goes across that driveway. What's the name of that?
Red by Strong School.
Mill Pond. To make that crossing all the way across both of those things with a pedestrian light on either side. Because people who are crossing the Mill Pond thing don't really have a crosswalk light, and you can't see. If somebody's coming north and turning right, they could turn into anybody who's crossing any part of that now. So that's got to be improved, and hopefully that will. Phase 2 is the pedestrian loop that is in purple on there that was in our town plan of conservation development with the added Haddon Quarter to Brick Lane loop because we were looking at where people really walk most frequently and trying to make that safer. The ideal thing is to put sidewalks everywhere, but we cannot do that. And Brick Lane is too narrow to stripe with a wide shoulder. But Maiden Lane is plenty wide enough to stripe with a wide shoulder, which was also measured by Nathan Jacobson Associates. So we would like to see a center line striped there and the side stripes with a wider shoulder for people to walk on. Again, ideally, putting a sidewalk from Main Street to Picket Lane, which is very heavily used and gets people onto the school campus, would be something that we'd be shooting for at some point in the future. What else do I want to say about that?
Have you met with the school about Picket Lane?
We did meet with the school about Picket Lane. They are in favor of any improvements that we can make that would make it safer for people to walk there. But, you know, our feeling is a sidewalk should be all the way around. That whole thing, what I put in our conceptual plan is that it's school property and, you know, there's many discussions that would have to take place. But Picket Lane is also going to be improved. So there's at least some opportunity for maybe widening some spots or, you know, we'll have to be talking in conjunction with the school about that. But that would be Phase 2. And some part of the, we'd also like to put signage saying, hey, motorists, pedestrians could be in the road here because pedestrians are in the road there all the time. And some of the costs, we also looked into how much it would cost to put a sidewalk in. Right now, pretty cost prohibitive. We have an estimate from Ryan for concrete. I'm wondering what asphalt might cost and if that would be cheaper, but it's down the road. Some of the costs of the improvements that we could do now in terms of the paint and the signage and things, just so that people be aware that other people would be on the road, could be offset by a Sustainable Connecticut grant that's got an open submission period. So it would be nice to see if we could get some funds for that. It's $25,000. They'll, if you raise $25,000, they'll match it up to $50,000. So we're hoping to be able to take advantage of that. And then there was a sort of a late suggestion of maybe approaching Durham Manufacturing about putting a footpath in that would connect Maiden Lane or even just the back of the Durham manufacturing property to Allen Brook Park to keep people off the road. But I don't know if that's feasible, but it would be great if, you know, like a walking trail, just a footpath. So that's a new idea that just came up. And then, again, for Maiden Lane, which got so beautifully repaved and then became a 50 mile an hour highway, restriping that road. And these restripings would be happening on the schedule of the road improvements as they are scheduled to be chip sealed so that the cost would be minimal because the crews would be out there already. So we're looking at this as like a long-term plan, not all at once, but just piecemeal as each road is scheduled to be redone. That stretch of Maiden Lane can be restriped with, you know, to make the travel lanes 11 feet and the shoulders much wider, which would be safer for pedestrians and others, and also give people the perception that the road is narrower, and I think it would slow traffic.
The state DOT is fully okay with the 11-foot thing. They're not, we're not shooting anybody.
No, the 11-foot is their, is their requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's their requirement.
As they go through their VIP, their vendor-in-place program, they will be putting that into place as they go along with their road preservation plan.
So that, yeah, so that's another piece, I think, is that you don't have to go through the expensive bidding process and all of that, right? That's another piece of it, that you get some savings that way with their vendor-in-place program. And then the third phase is connecting our... And then the third phase is connecting our bicycle travel possibility with other towns. Middletown has a very big and very robust complete streets program. They've been working at it for years. They've gotten tremendous grants and have done some really nice things with bike loops and others. And they have a bike lane that goes along Milbrook Road into Johnson Lane and would really love for us to connect up with them and that would make bicycle commuting on the back roads safe from Middletown to Durham and it would hook up with Johnson Lane, Maiden Lane, and then down to Main Street. And then we'd have the bike lanes on Main Street and then we want to connect with Madison and Guilford, which are very heavily biked and have the share the road, charros and signs to connect up with those towns as well. So again, when those roads are resurfaced, they're state roads, so if we want to restripe them in any way, the cost of that would be DOT and we would be responsible for, well, we actually can't have bike lanes on there. They will just restripe to, because their standard is going to be that 11-foot lane. So they're going to restripe it that way anyway and we will be connected. So our cost would just be saying signs that say bike route periodically and that's, I think, about $350 per sign. I'm not sure how frequently we would want to be doing that, but we need, just need to keep these things in mind and stay on the schedule of when these things are happening. So that would just be the signage cost only. I actually wrote charros there, but I think we can't put those because we don't really have the width for a bike lane in some of the places. So that's it.
I've been involved with the Doric District and that for many years and this works dovetails totally. But it's not just a safety issue, it's actually the identity of the town and it's pretty much an economic issue. This would reinforce hugely the vitality and the draw of the town. I mean, I've played Russian roulette frequently in the crossings, but at any rate, it would be totally plus-plus all around. And it would really, people, I think, besides the, you know, historic nature, it would be, it'd be a great place to walk if all these things eventually happened. But it would be a boon to the town. I feel that the historic district and Main Street isn't the only part of town, but it's extremely important to the identity and the vitality of the town and this is totally complimentary.
Is anybody else from Complete Streets looking to have that I looked at?
I might remind the Board of Selectmen that we passed a resolution that it's not a complete street ordinance, but it's a resolution that says if the opportunity arises and funding is available, that we would implement complete streets options and aspects, if possible. So I'll get you a copy of that.
It's in the back of.
You have it?
Yeah.
The thing that I sent in, it's in the back of that.
At some point, there'll be more publicity push from within our group. We have to make the public more aware.
Right. We're, you know, we wanted to, of course, speak to the Board of Selectmen first and then we would like to meet with other town groups and, you know, as we've already met with John Jenkins and he's very much on board.
Let me just add one thing. Martin Anderson has been on the group since it began. And just to reinforce the reason we're talking to John, when you see some of the costs that are projected, for example, just doing the markings to create a bike route from Maiden Lane to Milbrook, you know, to get over there, understand that those costs are fully loaded. You know, that's the truck rolling around spraying the paint. That's somebody standing beside the truck and waving cars by. You know, that's putting out cones. That's digging the holes. Somebody looking into the hole to see if there's a hole there. You're putting the fence in the hole. So for the engineering costs, you know, those are ones where all of those things are included. You know, it's not just materials and that kind of thing. And so we do have opportunities, I think, when the town is able to do this. We're looking at essentially stencils, paint and time that's already on the books and paid for. So just understand there's a real distinction there, but the cost of the engineering study came up with all the fully-loaded costs. You know, like we hired people to do every aspect of this outside of the town. So we have ways of capitalizing, using our own people to make this far less expensive.
Leslie, can you talk about, you brought it up earlier and then it kind of got into the biking, which is awesome and everything, but the disability people who, everything, mainly more the sidewalks and whatnot. I think it's just so important that, you know, people who are disabled or just maybe, you know, we've got some communities on Main Street where maybe people don't drive cars and whatnot. So all the sidewalks, I mean, everything ADA compliant and everything?
Yes.
Just talk about that.
Well, I mean, I'm assuming that the sidewalks that are going on Main Street
Of course.
Are the ADA compliant. And I, part of the complete streets, I mean, that's another street user that this is all aimed for. You have people in wheelchairs, you have people pushing scrollers, you need curb cuts, you need enough time to get across an intersection, you need people to know that you're in the intersection, all of those things.
So more than just biking, it is absolutely perfect.
I mean, I erroneously probably think of people with, you know, wheelchairs and others, different mobility issues, as all pedestrians in a way because pedestrians go at different speeds and, you know, can cross with different levels of safety if things are dicey and we want to make it accessible and welcoming to everybody. You don't want to be, you know, the light changes and you have to run across and you're not going to make it or somebody won't see you or something like that. And I know one of the things that we talked about recently is that the town crews are going around and increasing the sightlines at certain intersections and corners and those kinds of things are really important. And that's another way that people who are not in a car can be visible to somebody and that would go for somebody in a wheelchair, too. Becky, did you have something?
Yeah, I'm not speaking to the disabilities issue, but we did also include, I believe, crosswalks from Maiden to Cross Maiden.
Yes, oh, sorry, I left that out, but it's on the map, yes.
So that's, again, a route that's used all the time.
Not signal crosswalks, but painted crosswalks.
Painted crosswalks with a sign pedestrians cross. And so it would be another place on Maiden Lane, the two places where people are crossing back and forth.
Also, this all sounds great, but it needs some kind of authority. Like, we have a sort of department of police, but there's virtually no enforcement of anything. So I would like to see some teeth put into Main Street and others because people are ridiculously flagrant with their violations.
Any questions?
Very clear. Thank you.
Leslie?
Yes.
The presentation that you provided the Board of Selectmen?
Yeah.
Would you like this included or would you be opposed to having it included in our minutes?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'll make copies. Didn't happen tonight.
Item number six, I'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation from MJ Clock from the Economic Development Commission with gratitude for her service.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven, do we have any nominations for Ag Commission or Inland Wetlands alternate?
I do not.
Item number eight, I have a motion to appoint Ken DeVito to the vacancy on the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item number nine, so we have a couple of decisions to make. That is the date of the next Board of Selectmen meeting. I will, well, right now I have plans to be in Washington for a convention as long as planes and trains are still going to Washington. So first decision to be made is, do you still want to hold the Selectmen meeting? Which would be fine with me. And we also have planned to have the Joint Boards and Commission meeting that night. And in the beginning of this year, when we were setting our schedule, we discussed possibly changing the format of that meeting.
Think we keep it on, continue to have the meeting? If there's nothing on the agenda, we can always cancel it or nothing pressing, but I have no problem keeping it, George.
If you're good with it, if you're around the time, we'll just get it canceled. But, you know, to hear from the boards, I think.
I would rather not miss the Joint Board and Commission meeting. I mean, I think if there's business on the agenda for the Board of Selectmen, you guys are fully capable of that. But I would hate to miss the Joint Boards and Commission.
Do you want to move that date?
So I would ask that we move that date.
Okay. Do you have a date in mind?
Well, we would have to push it into April because the next week after that, we have two public informational meetings planned, one for the water and one for the sidewalks. So the 13th is the public hearing for the budget.
When's our next regular scheduled Selectmen meeting?
After the 13th would be the 27th.
Oh, because of the 6th?
No.
No.
It's the 13th.
Why don't we do it the 27th?
April 27th?
After the Board of Selectmen meeting?
So at 8 o'clock, Joint Boards and Commission meeting?
The only issue with that, and again, it would have been the issue here, is that's a late meeting.
It's a late start. Those meetings typically, again, unless we change the format, no matter how much we say we're going to be quick, are two hours.
Why don't we start early then?
So maybe change the, make the Board of Selectmen meeting special, starting at 6? We can do that.
I think that's better. I don't think people would be able to.
And then we could start at 7 for this. As far as format, you had some thoughts?
I just, no, I thought it would be better to dovetail it to a Selectmen meeting, make sure all of us are there and get more feedback our direction.
So the roundtable format is fine?
So we're going to keep the 23rd, but we will.
Keep the 23rd and then, you know, as it gets closer, we'll take a look at the agenda. And if there's nothing pending, make the decision to cancel. If there's something that needs a vote, you'll have it. Okay. Okay, item number 10, we've had a request from the Human Services Department to dispose of the following per the disposal of surplus property policy. A Kodak ESP 5210 printer, a piano and a coffee table. The printer does not work. And the piano and coffee table that were both donated to us are... The piano is very much out of tune and it is recommended by a piano tuner that it's not really worth that much. The coffee table that was donated, the person who donated it doesn't want it back. And it's not something that is useful at the Activity Center anymore.
Make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Well, when you say dispose, mainly the coffee table, that could go at the transfer station, right?
We can put it there.
I mean, it could go out in the...
Yeah.
The other stuff's a little bigger, but that's really not that big. Someone might want that.
The piano, I bet you at any given day in Durham, there's probably 25 pianos that people want out of their basements or houses. So.
Get a baby grand if you want.
So I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item number 11, we do have to answer the request from Mira to state our interest or lack thereof to enter into a long-term agreement if, if and when the Trash Energy Plant is refurbished. You heard the presentation. I think you also heard what I did, kind of between the lines, that what most towns are doing is saying, yes, of course, we're interested in participating as members, but we cannot abide and support $145 tip fee.
Right, I mean, it's still non-binding at this point.
It's all non-binding. The purpose of the interest was to show investors that there are municipalities who will remain as members. But I heard from Tom that he wants also for us to make a strong statement that we cannot support that kind of tip fee.
That goes without saying. So, yeah, I would be in favor of doing both, telling them we're willing to look into it, but non-binding, if you want a binding resolution, drop your number.
Right. So I'll make that a motion.
Sure, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, any updates on the Corn School discussion? We're going to rush our time here. We have 10 more minutes.
There is, and it might take another 10 minutes.
Okay, so.
Want to jump over that?
Jump over that. Make a motion to approve the February 24th budget meeting minutes. Any additions, deletions, corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Make a motion to approve February 24th, 2020, regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any additions, deletion, corrections?
Number 10, second paragraph, after the word "statement", just include against a member of the community. Last sentence, second paragraph, number 10, after the word "statement". Again, it's not what, it was, you know, I don't think somebody should be using that as a way to make disparaging comments against members of our community and I think that was specifically spelled out last meeting. So just against a member of the community. Against a member of the community. Would people want to say against any of us? I don't think, that's fine. It's really just using it as a platform to hurt somebody else, I don't think is right.
All those in favor of the minutes as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have any tax refunds this month, old and new business. Quickly, the Horseshoe Tavern has reported a loss of business. as a result of the parking bans, although they recognize that it certainly improves safety. So they're working diligently on a plan. Their, their, the plans that have been developed, however, are quite costly. So they've asked us to consider creating some on-street parking. And we have their engineer taking a look at that. And I've asked our engineer to call their engineer to see what they're looking at. Met with the Greenbacker family regarding plans for their property, along with our new town planner and our consultants for economic development. We have somewhat of a plan put together to try and get them to figure out their highest best use for that property before they market it. Last month, or last meeting, you gave permission to extend the Tree Service contract with our current provider. However, they have declined that offer to extend their current contract. No surprise, Tree Services have a lot of work these days, so we have to, we have to bid that out. And that is out for advertisement as we speak. We had second interviews on Friday for three of the applicants for assistant assessor position. No decision has been made yet on that. The surplus property bid will go out tomorrow, March 10th. The Conservation Commission bid for native species harvesting was closed. We received one bid, and the Conservation Commission will discuss that at their next meeting. The Social Services Coordinator, Morgan Perry, successfully completed her probationary period. And that will be noted in her file. I met with Ed Bailey and Robin Newton for a verbal three-month review with positive results with that. I met with Middlefield and RSD 13 to discuss a unified message and response regarding COVID-19. Emergency Services Departments and Public Health Department is on alert, and they are participating in all the statewide meetings. There have been many. To your point, Chuck, we, cleaning is part of the conversation. And we were waiting, as of last week, we were waiting on guidance about what kind of materials to use, especially in our schools. Because bleach is not a acceptable way to clean in schools with the prevalence of respiratory asthma and such. So we have been using clean green products in our school system, and we've been waiting, and we do that on the town side as well. We've been waiting for guidance to make sure that that's an acceptable use with this. And we'll be looking to do some additional cleanings because of this. We, some of the other things that we've been asked to consider, and with each department and each agency, it means different things. But remote teaching, the schools are talking about how they would provide those services. On the town side, it would be remote working and what the opportunities there would be. Mass gatherings, the governor today at a statewide conference call encouraged all municipalities to consider postponing or canceling any gathering of 100 people or more, including, that would be sporting events and parades and other kind of gatherings. And at this point in time, it would be voluntary and need-based. Our public service agencies met on Thursday and discussed staffing, personal protective equipment, et cetera, et cetera. And buying materials of all, all kinds has been a problem, from masks to cleaning supplies to, to other kinds of personal protection equipment. So the gov, the governor has opened up through DAS the use of government contracting. But if the supplies aren't there, the supplies aren't there. So, we're very concerned about that. And we will, after this is over, reconsider the top, type of stockpiling that we do for emergency purposes. We will be meeting with the school once a week until this crisis is over. Those meetings are already set on my calendar. And we're just gonna put out information as, as it comes. It's a very fluid event. It's expected to peak at a certain point, meaning it's expected to get worse in, in the United States before it gets better. They're already seeing a decline in the areas that have been hit first hardest. And that are the Category 3 countries where there is a travel advisory, and that's China, Korea, Iran, and Italy at this point in time. Emergency Management will be, Department will be our lead agency on the town side. And clearly, the superintendent's office will be lead on, on the school side. There will be a public informational meeting about the sidewalk project on March 25th at the firehouse at 7 o'clock. Letters were sent out today to all Main Street property owners, including businesses, for them to get involved with that. Community events I attended, I attended the CVEF Volunteer Recognition Meeting, the Durham Republican Town Committee Meeting, and the Durham Fair Foundation Meeting. I also attended the monthly meeting with superintendent and the First Selectmen of Middlefield, CCM Commission on Property Tax Reform. We met at DEEP Headquarters with Commissioner Dykes about the crisis at the trash-to-energy plant. Middlesex County Chamber of Commerce Legislative Delegation Meeting, the Nine-Town Transit First Selectmen Breakfast, Read Across America at Brewster School, the CCM Small Communities Council Meeting, the CCM LedgeCom Meeting, and the CCM Board of Directors Meeting, Chief's Council Meeting, and the Local Wellness Coalition, which today presented results from the Search Institute survey that we do every two years. I encourage you all to go online when I send out the link to see those, those results. While the, the numbers are low in terms of problem areas for our youth here in D13, there are a number of increases that we saw that should raise some concern for you, especially around binge drinking, about mental health, and about vaping. Our, our numbers in those areas did creep up a little bit. Any other old or new business? Any other selecting comments?
Just one, I talked with Walter Douglas yesterday. He's actually, he's concerned about a streetlight in front of the pharmacy that's been out for a couple of months, and he thinks it could be a safety issue.
Streetlight or sidewalk light?
Good question.
Okay, we'll look into that. So if it's a streetlight or either one, we get to do that online, which is good. And then we can track when it's complete. So, we'll go and we'll get the, the number of that. So at this point in time, we have to adjourn for a special town meeting, and we will resume the Board of Selectmen meeting at the conclusion of the special town meeting. Mr. Moderator, you have been elected.
Is it me or is it Warren?
It's Warren. There's only two, two things, two more to vote.
All right, first item on the agenda is the call and the return of the call. I'll ask Kib Garvis to read those.
Call to a special town meeting, Town of Durham. A special town meeting of the electors and citizens qualified to vote at town meetings of the Town of Durham will be held at the third-floor Meeting Room Town Hall on Monday, March 9th, 2020, at 8:00 p.m. for the following purpose. Item one, to transfer no more than $13,200 from 842-0305-57322 Fire Apparatus Reserve to 942-0305-57322 Capital Improvement Plan Fire Apparatus for the purchase of a body replacement for Durham 6. Item two, to transfer no more than $50,000 from 842-0305-57322 Fire Apparatus Reserve to 942-0305-57322 Capital Improvement Plan Fire Apparatus for the purchase of a 2020 Ford PI utility truck. Signed Laura L. Francis, First Selectman, John T. Chef Chef Selectman, and George M. Eames, the Fourth Selectman. Return of the call. Return is hereby made that the undersigned on the 25th day of February caused to be posted on the public signpost in the Town of Durham, a written warning by the selectmen, and on the 26th day of February caused to be published in the Middletown Press, a newspaper having a circulation in the Town of Durham, a like warning of the special town meeting to be held the 9th of March, 2020. Signed Laura L. Francis, First Selectman.
Thank you. Let me briefly review the eligibility to vote. You must be a U.S. citizen, a Durham elector, or a property owner with at least $1,000 in assessment on the last completed grant list. Property owners may only vote on items involving the expenditure of money, which of course, both of our items tonight fall into that category. May I have a show of hands of those who will consider themselves ineligible to vote? That would be one person, and let the record show that. Something, a decorum paragraph.
That's for us hard of hearing.
This is, this is what?
For us hard of hearing mainly.
Okay. Good point. Discussions amongst the audience members may be disruptive to others. Please speak only when given to the floor, given the floor by the moderator. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
No motion.
Motion by Rob, seconded by Laura. Do you have a update? Please, please speak.
I would just like to add that each of these two motions were recommended by the Board of Finians at its, at their meeting of February 18, 2020.
All right, then that does not change the intent of the motion, so we'll accept that as an addition. Anything further? All those in favor of approving the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It has carried. And we'll go right to item one. To transfer no more than $13,200 from number 842-0305-57322 Fire Apparatus Reserve to number 942-0305-57322 Capital Improvement Plan Fire Apparatus for the purchase of a body replacement for Durham 6. Moderator calls on Chief Rob Chat for the purpose of making a motion.
Making a motion to purchase that body utility for our pickup truck.
That's good. Is there a second? Seconded by Rick. Rob, would you care to speak to your motion?
Sure, is this for a body replacement for our, I think it's a 2012, 2012 Ford pickup truck? We're doing a lot more medicals. This body would help us, allow us to store more equipment on it. Currently, we leave a lot of it in the bed in a little bitty box that a lot of short numbers can't reach. So this will help us with the response to a lot of the medical calls that we're going to.
All right, is there discussion? Rick?
I'd like to comment, fire companies by excellent dedicated services and sense of acceptance, has never missed a call. So I wholeheartedly support this item.
Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the vote. Would you like me to read the motion again?
No.
Is there objection? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving item one on the call, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I declare it has passed unanimously. Item two, to transfer no more than $50,000 from number 842-0305-57322 Fire Apparatus Reserve to number 942-0305-57322 Capital Improvement Plan Fire Apparatus for the purchase of a 2020 Ford, I presume that's pickup utility truck.
It is, we, well, hopefully.
That's okay. The moderator recognizes the chief for, for the purpose of making a motion.
Only to make a motion for the purchase of a vehicle.
Motion made, is there a second? Seconded again by Rick Farmley. Rob, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, we currently have a 1996 Jeep that we utilize for response to medical calls, actually, to all the fire calls. I utilize it mostly, and it stays at my residence. It's a command vehicle, it has meters, it has medical equipment, it has all kinds of radio and stuff like that to be utilized on the fire grounds. And we use it to go back and forth to department meetings. We go to meetings all over, pretty much Middlesex County and sometimes Out of County.
Good, thank you for that. Is there discussion? Is there discussion?
Just for clarification, you're going from a Jeep and PI, is that actually an SUV?
That is an SUV, it's a vehicle, that's why I coined it.
Rick?
We're getting it off the state bid.
I wholeheartedly support this position. We have many talented people in the community and the fire company over the years have contributed greatly to their successful outcome of all our disasters that have come up. I can't hardly, I ain't coming up all the way home for the town.
Susan?
May I ask if you took into consideration the fuel efficiency of the vehicles?
Yes, it's actually, it's a small V6. All the sport utilities now are state leased, it's off the State Peace Pack or the State Connecticut Purchase Program. And they all utilize the V6 now inside their SUVs.
So you have a typical mileage for these?
I don't know, I think it's like 28, 24, something like that. Those are pretty gas mileage.
Is there further discussion? Is there further discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed with the vote. Once again, unless there's objection, I will not read the motion. All those in favor of item two on the call, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? I declare that it's passed unanimously. Having no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I didn't hear somebody back here, but, oh, it was Laura, okay, that's good. And seconded, you can all raise your hands, that'd be great. And seconded by many, I declare we're adjourned.
The Board of Selectmen meeting shall resume. We have one item left on our agenda, and that is to get an update on the corn school on discussion. So at our last meeting, we discussed trying to get drilled down a little bit more on how we might use the building so that we can get a more accurate suggestion from a code consultant, whether or not we can get any modifications from any of the code implications that would be required for renovations and change of use. be required for renovations and change of use. And tell us what you just passed out.
So basically, to get an idea of code workaround, the point that we were making was you kind of have to know what might go where in the building, how you might utilize it for public use, so you know if there's a need for a code workaround or not. So what I did to start with, I went back to the Silver Petrosili final presentation that went before the town two years ago, and this was the $7 million project. I also met with Jimmy Kroto today and took a look at the Drummy Roseanne Anderson report that the school did in 2014. And what I did, I talked with Fire Company Robbie Chad, I talked again with Jimmy Kroto, a lot of residents, and I also touched base with Durham Manufacturing today, just to get an idea of where this project is, where it's going, and if there is a need for a code workaround. Basically, what I handed out here, the basic site conditions of the project, I went off of the Silver Petrosili report, and we're looking at the original estimate that they put down, and again, my point from day one was $7 million seemed a little excessive. Is that really a good number, and what kind of code workarounds might we need based on their recommendations? So I had to start with their recommendations. And some of the, I guess, errors, omissions, changes, and again, everyone has an opinion, but starting with the site conditions, the paving around the building, talking in a meeting with the school and with Johnny Jenkins, that $250,000 that went into the $7 million proposal was actually to pave Picket Lane, that was not to pave a parking area at Korn School. In fact, Jimmy Kroto informed me today that Telltown came back with a $270,000 proposal to do all of Picket Lane, and that includes milling it down to the subsurface. So when you're looking at just the parking area within the school itself, you're probably looking at more $25,000 to $50,000. So what I did on the right-hand column is I'm looking at some of the estimates, that's just trying to restate, looking at where we are. The little arrows that are on all of the items that I put down in the center column, those are rated by, again, the original, or the second, the one that we went to town meeting with, the $7 million bond project, those were the high-rated priority proposals that the architect came back and said, this is what we definitely need to do. Then they rated them down from 1, 2, 3, 4, 1 being the highest need. So again, accessible parking, $40,000, the people I spoke to basically indicated that seemed to be excessive again, and it included site paths to playfields that, again, that's not necessarily part of the proposal. The portable classrooms, they probably want to be demolished, again, it's not the highest priority, they listed it number 2. Again, the feeling is that $60,000 was a little excessive, we came back at $30,000. The minor brick spalding in need of repointing, the first proposal done by the school system in 2014 said that most of the walls appeared to be in very good condition, showing limited need for remedial work with a possible exception of cracks created by thermal expansion which can be cleaned and caulked. They really, the school, when they looked at reusing the building two years before this second report was done, didn't see that as big a need for masonry type work, just normal expansion and contraction. Door thresholds, again, I'm pretty much agreeing that we're in that ballpark. The next item, I'm going to skip for now. Window frames and glazing, original building, replaced the windows, so there was a budgetary number of $325,000, again, it's not a number 1 priority, it's a number 2. The school, when they did their analysis, the windows came back, the aluminum windows with single-pane glass meet current code for rescue and ventilation requirements. They clearly are single-pane, they clearly leak. Again, is it necessary to do it right now? You want the most energy-efficient building in the world, absolutely, but if you just want to look at something and say, what are your absolute costs to get something off the ground, it's not needed. You can basically do a project like that over time. The roofs at 3/4 of a million dollars, this is one of my favorites. Again, that to me is just grossly overstated. I have a commercial building that's more than twice the size of Korn School, and I did 70,000 square feet of roofing for a little bit over a quarter of a million dollars. This building is substantially less than 30,000 square feet when you back out the metal roof for the gymnasium. This is an extremely high number, and the roof, again, on the school evaluation, Silver Petrosili was saying that this is nearing the end of the useful life. The roof was put on in 2000, the metal roof was installed over the gymnasium, and a built-up system was installed over the music room, art areas in the classroom areas. These areas have a 30-year warranty and are in very good condition. So we're 20 years into a 30-year warranty. I put a number in the budget, to me, $154,000, you can roof that whole building, insulation, pitch it, and put a rubber membrane roof on, but we're still 10 years into a warranty period, so you probably don't even need to do that right now. Loading dock and kitchen is in need of repairs and improvement. Again, I think the cost they came in was a little high. Some of these others were within a few dollars. The required knees spaces are not, do not exist in the original cabinetry. Again, do you need these cabinets in classrooms? Do we have classrooms? If we're using community space, what are we using it for? Do we have to redo cabinetry? My attitude was no, not right now. The hardware, some of the push-pull knobs, again, I've done that in my building, that if you're doing that, I mean, it's not a big deal to replace a doorknob with a push-bar. The cost is extremely high. Signage, again, the cost seems to be extremely high. The means of egress in the corridors, that's rated to number 1, I would agree with the number they present. Kitchen prep area, not a high priority, again, I feel it's overstated. The finished floorings, the ceilings, and the gypsum board, the next three items were to get a better refresh of the space area. I mean, it wasn't, again, a high priority, it was to make the area feel better. As far as the ceilings are concerned, again, when the school looked at them, the ceiling quote was, "Most spaces have suspended acoustical ceiling panels and are generally in good condition." I don't think $175,000 replaced from 2x2 ceiling squares is needed all at once, if it's even needed at all. So again, opinion hazardous of material treatment, I wouldn't really change much there at all. There is asbestos in the building, I would take their numbers and pretty much agree with them across the board, the abatement needs that we've done. Plumbing and fire protection, a hose to a faucet, I don't know, it means a backflow preventer, or backflow for something like that on half-inch or 3/4-inch pipe is nowhere near $10,000. ADA compliant sinks in the classroom, again, why would we have sinks in every classroom if we're converting this space? So why would we put in an ADA compliant sink? The domestic water heater, I absolutely agree, it failed before they closed the school down. Kitchen doesn't have hand sinks, you have the three-compartment sink, that is, again, that's a low priority by their own admission. Kitchen isn't provided with a prep table, again, are we going to be serving food there? Are we doing that right away? It's a three priority out of a series of four for them, so not super high. The building is not currently fully protected by a sprinkler system, again, by Silver Petrosili's report, it is not required by code, but when you're in there, the thought was, you can do it, and I would agree, you absolutely could do it. There's certain areas that you probably want to tap into, there's a decent main coming in, and the EPA is in agreement to hook up per Jimmy Kroto to both the domestic water and the fire system right into the building. So how far do you want to take it? And if it's not required by code, again, right now, they have areas of closets, they have boiler areas, they have areas that with doors on, basically, that you're not looking into. The kitchen hood, again, how far do you want to get into the kitchen? Insulation roof-mounted area, I would agree with the number. The chiller, it's outlived its useful life, it has, but actually, it still works. It doesn't meet current energy codes. There is the one area I think we could look at a code workaround, that someone could look at that and see if in fact that doesn't come up to compliance immediately. Hot water, chilled water pumps have outlived their useful lives, again, they're not broken, there's no code requirement, it's a low priority. Building exhaust fans have outlived their useful lives, again, according to Jimmy Kroto in that building, everything is working, and they're in very, very good shape. Building management systems has outlived its useful life. That thing is like, it was built around 2000, and it is, it's a Siemens system, it's a super high-tech system. I don't know how much of that the town would need for their purposes. Existing air handler units do not have the economizer function, gym and cafe units require energy wheels. You can retrofit those units, but according to Jimmy, he fully believes that the air handlers do have economizer functions, they're working fine, they were replaced with current edition in 2002. And I just note that both the cafeteria and the gymnasium are already rated for A3 assembly use, so if it's a use code update, you don't really have to do more if it's already in assembly use. The new boiler and chiller plant for adaptive reuse leasing option, again, if we're not going to lease out the building for commercial applications, we just saved ourselves $750,000. The chillers and boilers within the system are all functioning and fine, and $750,000 for burner or boiler, I would really like to see that unit. When the school looked at replacing any of that, they were looking at the $100,000 range, not the $750,000 range. Electrical systems, again, going down the list, I pretty much agree with the numbers there, except for the existing fluorescent lighting, it's not going to meet current code. It's all TA fixtures, I believe that's a possible place we can do a code workaround, as you can replace it over time, and the project would definitely qualify for utility rebate if it was ever deemed to be needed. The exterior building lighting will not meet current codes, actually, the school system is going to update that for us as part of the 2020 energy project that they have funds set aside for, they are going to bring all the exterior lighting up to LED code for us. Emergency lighting number 3, the generator, the emergency generator has failed, so I would agree, that does need to be done over, and the main electrical service will need to be tested. Again, I feel the cost's a little high. Finally, the fire alarm system, I agree, bring that up to testing requirement. So by and large, it's really two code workaround issues, and it has more to do with lighting. But when I take those numbers and I take out the use and saying, we're not going to commercialize or use part of the building so we don't have to zupper zone at $750,000, get the parking lot out of there that really is a road, take out some of the other options, that $7 million number, in my opinion, and the opinion of many other people who are in the industry, can actually get whacked down to about $1.3 million. And I put in a possible source of funds for that, and I'll explain that. I spoke with John Goak today, and again, the final page, if you're looking ahead, is a blueprint of, again, something that I think that you would want to give to a code compliant person to say, what goes where, and how would you lay this out, and how extensive does the review need to be? But if it were possible that we could ever take a building for free, and again, I'm a businessperson, one of the things that frustrates me with the Town of Durham, that I know would be very hard for me to ever adjust to, when you're in a business and you own a business or run a business, I get a quarter million dollar project, within a day, I can make a decision on that. The town has many more hoops that you have to step through, there's more boards, there's more commissions, and part of this process is that. If this were my building, if this were my town, if I owned the Town of Durham, I would jump all over this. It really does make sense from a source and use perspective, if you have something that you can get for nothing, if it's a commercial building, it's on slab construction, it's built like a brick house, I mean, it is solid compared to a lot of the buildings that we have in town that are in dire need of replacement or repair. If the decision were mine and mine alone, I would say yes. As a member of the Board of Selectmen, when I look at this, I'd say, it's a tough call. The problem with it is, again, if you can do it and avoid cost to take that and eliminate something else, or divert cost somewhere, it makes perfect sense, but you cannot increase the mill rate, you cannot add more cost to it. So part of it is operating, what you put in it matters, because what you put in it will be with you for the next 30 years, every year on an operating budget. You need to keep the contents to a point where you don't have a lot of staff in there that you're adding bodies. But if you do have areas of a school that's too big, an area that's too big, and you have a need such as public safety, what I did just for fun of it was laid that out to have a separate wing for that, and nothing too intensive other than the ambulance department, because clearly we have a deal, an issue in the town with 205 Main Street. Where we go with the ambulance going forward is something that we're a little bit up in the air with, but I did call John Goak today at Durham Manufacturing and asked them if they are still interested in buying that building, and he gave me a little additional background after he said yes. Durham Manufacturing sold that land off to the town in the 20s, as in the 1920s, early 1930s, for a firehouse because they knew that was needed on Main Street and they wanted to centralize. But what happened was the septic systems, all of the periphery that goes with that building, are under the parking lot of Durham Manufacturing. It's more than just the four, five parking spaces that they use, I mean, that building is on a postage stamp, and just like the firehouse using the fairgrounds, the ambulance center is using Durham Manufacturing, and they would absolutely love it back. So the proposal to him was, if we can get creative and have a commercial building that we can modify and move that, would you be willing to go above the resale or the praise price of the building and make a private donation? And take that money, and because the ambulance corps is 501(c)(3), you can take the tax deduction on it. And he said, absolutely, that's something that they would love to consider, and I would say for the record, whatever funds that they would come up with, up to $50,000, I would match myself.
Are you saying using the Community Investment Act to get a tax credit?
I'm saying basically, if we can structure this where we're moving the ambulance department and we're putting that into the center, take funds, private funds, to help fund for that makeover. So instead of passing it through the Town of Durham, which is not a 501(c)(3), if you can use, utilize the 501(c)(3) status of the ambulance department, corporations can make a tax deduction contribution and help fund a community project. So if they're in, I'm in, and to me, that's why I put on the source and use of funds, $100,000 in private support, but between the need of what we're not satisfying on Main Street or the Town of Durham with our resources, and the opportunity to take a commercial building in the And the opportunity to take a commercial building in the center of a complex that has, to me, a lot of kids that could use the emergency services. It's so neat, ball fields, kids get hurt, football fields, things of that nature. I think it's a good fit. The question is, how do you flow the traffic through where you're not interfering with, with the children? But I think about that and I start to laugh and say, you know, there are 30,000 cars a day that go up and down Main Street and police, fire, ambulance, everyone seems to be able to navigate that. If you're looking at kids, I mean, within a structure of that nature, I mean, we deal with the Durham Fair of the year and somehow get emergency vehicles in and out without driving over anybody. You're following the speed limit and people are alert. I mean, I don't see a liability there or an issue there if we're following the traffic laws. So, are there people there? Yeah. And where are their people? There tends to be accidents. So, if I'm reporting to an accident, it's just as dangerous as, as passing by those children or adults or dogs to go somewhere else. So, from a blueprint perspective, what you can give to a code consultant, I mean, this is just my swing at it from a use perspective and from a cost perspective. I think this, to me, is a little bit more realistic. I think we can do it without bonding on the purchase side. But on the operating side, it scares me to death to have a building that might be filled with something else that's going to cost us long-term. So, my position would be if we could commit to this type of use because there's fewer bodies that would be needed in that building. Because it's not a big community presence. It's, it's people that are volunteers or need office space and equipment storage space. To me, that, that makes more sense. So, I don't see, you know, need for like three full-time janitors or something of that nature down there. I think it's more of a cleaning service type of issue that, that, you know. And every department cleans up their own. So, based on something like that, I would say, you know, again, if we can keep the, this next part, which I didn't look into, the operating cost down. I could support something like that. But if it's a, like the first time the, the project was presented to the public, it was a, we have a building and this is what we could put in it. What do you think? I think we need to say exactly what we want to put in it, exactly where it wants to be. So, we know what kind of code issues we might have. And that's my pitch.
So, next step. I think it's worth sitting down with the code guy to see if this is enough. And it's just going to be a recommendation because you can't, you can't, you need blueprints and you need an architect to actually apply for the modification. Would the next step also include contracting with an architect to check, to confirm these numbers? Or do we, or do we take it on faith and then work into it, ease into it?
I think my, my approach was looking at the must-dos and those, I think, are non-negotiable. The rest of it, even through the report was, again, they're rated on priority. And there's a, there's a difference of opinion from one report to the next as to what that might cost. You can get a third architect and they can come up with a third number. But if you know that building, once you get through the remediation issues, that building can be used as is if you really needed to, other than code compliance issues. That if someone says, yeah, I don't care if it's T8 lighting, you got to update to LED lighting, you've got a cost. Now, would someone work with you and say, you can do it over a three-year period, five-year period, can reserve for it? I think so. And again, CLMP would, would, you would definitely qualify for.
For the small, yeah, the small business program.
So, the end result number is substantially less than what was originally presented, I think, to the town. But I think the numbers are more reflective. We can verify numbers, we can kick it back and forth, but you can also say, we come up with a budget and say, this is the number. Once we get through the requirements, we're done. We have to stop. Or you pass. There's a risk, but it is, again, based on opinion and everybody has one. And this is my opinion, this is another architect's opinion, and this is the one that went before the town. The school's opinion came out to $2.5 million for upgrades to keep it as a school, what they needed in 2014. What they need, they did in the final engineering report, obviously, was substantially higher. Soft costs to me, again, and that's a whole different discussion, but the overall project was $5 million through this Silver and Petricelli report. The soft cost added $1,003,000 and the contingency was 12% or $680,000, something of that nature. Contingencies are great, but the higher, the number, 12% times something equals a greater number. The soft costs, and I'm pretty sure it was mostly furniture and fixtures and things of that nature. It's something that, again, if we're moving people who already exist, bring your desk with you. I mean, do you need to, you know, tack on those additional costs? So, once we know, and if we have meeting rooms, I mean, chairs, tables, things of this nature, they're sufficient. I mean, we don't need $1.3 million in furniture.
So, the cost of turning the music room and the art room into two garage bays.
I added the cost.
You added?
Yeah, I added the cost in there.
$28,000?
Well, it was that plus $80,000, the number that I put in. I mean, basically, it's a slab construction, but there probably would have to be some work done on the slab. But if you have too much building, the thought of that, when I looked at the building itself, the roof lines are higher. You have an existing exterior wall that they basically put, for lack of a better word, a lean-to addition on. So, it's a separate entity. So, if, in fact, you have too much building and you have storage needs, they have two nine-foot windows on the edge of the bay of that. That would be very easy to pull that out, put some kind of a door, double doors in there. But you do want to look at, you know, make sure that the slab is thick enough to support that. But if it's trailers for emergency management and DART, they don't have any kind of hazardous materials inside of them. So, the requirement for that floor is minimal. If it is an ambulance, you might need to put some kind of an oil separator or something in there depending on what, what's going on within that review. So, that's kind of just a thought.
And I'm not trying to poke holes and this is, this is a valid question. Any thought about when, and I know this is conceptual, but choosing this area for possible ambulance bay? Any thought about, any code issues or practical issues of going through the parking lot to get to the road?
Yeah. Talked to Jimmy about that with the septic system is, and you could definitely loop back around. And the thought was that, basically, there should be a loop around the entire building. The side back closest to Hersix Pond would be emergency vehicles only, or mostly. You could put a curb in, put a separation in, emergency vehicles to one side and public to the other. But come around with the roads coming back around there. Your resident state trooper, he wants his own door to come in and out. Privacy, again, all of these rooms have doors, so he could do whatever he needs in private. The, if there's a bunk room, he had right across the way from the ambulance garage, that's why I conceptually put it there between the bunk rooms and ambulance department. They walk right out the door and they're right there, or they can go down the hall if they want to stay inside. So, it's, it's a design of a kitchen, it's a triangle, who gets where, closest edge of the building for emergency management. He has a lot of storage needs. He probably needs a small office space as well. And again, I went off of the list that you gave us from everyone meeting and who wants what, where. If you do lay it out and you have a public safety wing, you put a door divider, again, that's where that arrow is in the middle of the corridor. You say, you close this off and this is basically outside of the public's purview unless, you know, they have an appointment or a need. But I mean, for me, this, this combines a want and a need and is probably something that is very sellable. Again, done in the right fashion. Could I be 100% wrong? Probably not, but maybe 50% wrong. There is a risk. There's a risk with anyone's numbers, but you can pad them up or you can drop them down. Is there a middle ground somewhere? And again, this school's proposal, I think, said, you know, it was two and a half million, but a lot of that money, $775,000, went into ventilation, which this report doesn't get into as much because there are all these rooftop units. So, most of these items in the building, most of the HVAC, the lighting, everything was upgraded in 2002. The building is basically sat mothball for five years. So, what's the useful life that they put on a lot of this? You know, it's, it's less than 15 years and, and 30-year warranty on a roof, I would take full advantage of it. And again, a lot of the other equipment, if the clock says it's at the end of its useful life. I mean, I've had a furnace that worked in my house once for 65 years. I mean, you never know. It could go in 10 years. Hopefully, it's under warranty if it does, or it can last 40 years. So, there's no immediate outage or need or broken thing other than a domestic hot water heater and a generator in that building right now. But again, the layout was done, basically, to separate public safety from community center. You still have the multipurpose room, the gymnasium, you know, some of the concepts or thoughts that people were running by from the fire department was cut a hole, two holes in the, in the multipurpose room or the gym and put your ambulance bay in there. If it's possible not to disturb that room, you can use it for so many more things, including youth rec, basketball, voting, all that stuff without having to move an ambulance out. But again, the one thing that I said is absolute is you got to do the abatement. So, if the quote was 256,000 or wherever it was to abate the building, you got to get rid of the asbestos. You got to do those things. That makes sense.
Quick question on that? I'm sorry, because Silver Petricelli actually recommended just carpeting over the asbestos tiles at the town meeting.
Well, I don't know that they recommended that. They said it was an option. Definitely, it was an option.
In the report, they said you'd have to remove the mastic, the tiles, all of that. And they gave a budgetary number to do it. And to me, a carpet for playing basketball is probably a bad idea.
We'll have a public comment, I promise. So, let's just talk about next steps. Because before we could budget, use these numbers for budgetary purposes, I think we have to vet the concept or prove out the concept. And then we have to get them confirmed by, by an architect who will then draw up the bid specs, right? Or if we're not going to do it all at the same time, or help us with the sequencing if we're going to reserve and, and save up. So, next step.
Even in the bid process, even if you do that, the only point that I would make is if there are priorities, one, two, three, four, and you throw a bunch of money on it, let's say it's $1.3 million. What will $1.3 million get you? So, my attitude would be, if we budget a number, yeah, it would be nice to have, you know, I don't know, fresh carpeting or painted walls or something. If it's not a high quarter, it's not a must-do, what can you live with? So, is it a $7 million project? No, it most certainly isn't. Is it a $1 million, $2 million project? If it has to be, then I'd like to know that because you can't live without this or that or the other thing. And then it might be out of our reach. But if it is something that it would be nice to have, but you don't really need it, I don't need it. I don't need it right away. And if I can avoid cost anywhere else in Durham or make money selling excess property, 205 Main Street, Durham Manufacturing will clean that building up and make it look beautiful, just like they did the house on the other side.
That has to happen.
And I think that is a must. And again, I think the community wants it and I think the corporations are willing to help fund it. So, yeah, I would, I would take the offer. Not that John had a lot of choice, but I think if that's possible. So, the next step to me is, yeah, I mean, you vent it somehow and say, I mean, if we have a budgetary number as opposed to, can we do all of this? Do these numbers make sense? It might be, look at this bottom line and what can we get? And if, and if it really are the code updates per the original report, can we work around the lighting? Because that's the big number. That's a very big number. And there was just one other. The chiller has outlived its, chiller does not meet current energy code requirements for efficiency. Is the energy code, you know, is it paramount on, in this application? Because as Dick McManus said, energy code also would dictate on a flat building that you put an R39 insulation on the roof.
They're already backing off on some of that energy stuff because they know it's unworkable.
And it's costly.
Right. So, again, let's get back to next step. This is a great starting point that we're going to have to confirm. Because if I've learned nothing, I've learned this, that the public, if we're telling them that $1.3 million is going to get them a workable, usable community center, fix our public's safety needs. They're going to want to set it and forget it for a while. They're not going to want us to keep coming back every year saying.
Right.
We need this much money, we need this much money. I mean, as we've said before, there are still people out there who think we just built that firehouse, even though it's 45 years old.
That's the other caveat. Again, it comes down to a total need assessment because this does not address the firehouse. It doesn't address the firehouse needs. It doesn't address the two buildings on the side of the firehouse.
Yeah, but I think, I think it'd be easy to say, guys, we still have this to work, to, to, to fix. Yes. I'm talking about that building itself. Like, we, I think upfront, we need to tell the people that, you know, yes, the windows are okay now, but in 10 years, you're going to probably, it won't be a want, it's going to be a need. And in 10 years, the roof, or I think we need to really forecast that out to show the true cost of it.
And again, it comes down to how do you use the building? If I was a school child sitting next to a window in that building in fourth grade, which I was, and it's 20 below zero, I'm going to feel the cold air and I'm going to raise my hand and tell the teacher I'm cold. If that's being used for a public meeting space, it's being utilized for, you know, two, three hours a night. If it's being utilized by the resident state trooper, he's coming in for an hour or two a day. I mean, how, how much are you using any particular room? You know, are these people in there all day, all night? And is it really to that degree? Are there areas that are more important than others that you keep these people comfortable? I mean, I did that in, in my office. The areas that were, were used by staff constantly, those were the first ones that got new windows. But you do, you can phase things in over time. It, it's a bigger building than the town is used to and it is, you know, because it's bigger, there's going to be more issues going forward every year. So, it's a question, is it something that we want to take on?
And how much of all of this do we button up for approval, before approval?
And what is approval? How was approval?
Approval is to accept the offer, just to accept the offer, is, it can be done at a town meeting. It would be my recommendation or something to discuss, that it would be a town meeting that adjourns to a referendum.
I would agree. I wouldn't do this without the entire town. I wouldn't do this without the entire town getting a vote, not just a town meeting.
And we can, and decide that, our board can decide that according to 7-7, or someone can petition for that. But I would, I would say that.
I would want the entire town input and, yeah.
And the question there would simply be to accept. And then all of the rest would be following the same procedure we are now through budget, through the Board of Finance. But I think at, I would say we should have learned a lesson from when we accepted those houses without a plan, that we should, when we ask our residents to approve it, show them a conceptual plan.
Right. And that's why I tried to do that. Because just to say yes, again, as a businessman, if that were offered to me, I'd take it. Absolutely. Because I can think of so many things you can do with it. And I asked Jimmy Kroto today, I mean, what happens if the town says no? Are you seriously going to knock these down? And he said, we have no other choice.
Well, that's what the board said.
They'll be demolished.
That's what the board said, yeah.
And that building is in so much better shape than most of the older buildings that we're utilizing for municipal buildings in town. And it was designed as a commercial building as opposed to, this was designed to be a church and, you know, the firehouse was built as a firehouse, but...
So, so we know, we know what that approval is. We also know that we have to go to P and Z.
I mean, there would obviously be stipulations that we would require as well if we were seriously considering, such as right-of-way use of the roads, parking, surveying, all of these things. I mean, there's, there's a lot more to it.
Right.
And feedback from the board, if they would be amenable to how much acreage, how much more than just the building so that we have wiggle room to move, to park, to use.
So, as it turns out, our parking requirements are pretty modest. So if we were to use, I think, the current parking area, we would comply. That being said, we also have to consider utilities. So the original, the original conceptual agreement without spending the money of a surveyor and, you know, an attorney for subdivision, et cetera, et cetera, was that the town would take what it needed for parking and for utility, and the school would comply with that.
Well, the Deed of Right-of-Way, because Pickett Lane is obviously a school-owned road, so just make sure we have access, which we already do. I mean, we have Wallfields down there, we have the Times Courts down there. But that would make some people feel more comfortable to state it on the A2 survey and go to the school and draw a map and say, this is...
And we would have to make an agreement that would say, because we're responding from an emergency response perspective, that Pickett Lane has to be open ASAP. It's not necessarily the case right now. So that would be, you know, something to discuss. All right. So, again, next, really like next step. Do we engage the services of the code guy first, who will come a little bit cheaper than an architect?
Let's talk to the code guy and see if he can work with something, as, you know, Silver Petrocelli laid out with the rating and they marked the code. This is an ADA requirement, this is a whatever, I mean, whoever code required certain upgrades, some of them, again, if they're ADA and it had to do with sinks, if you decide, we don't need sinks in every room, then you just say, well, give us some money, we'll tear that out. So, putting it back the way it is and redoing exactly as it was laid out is probably silly. So, again, if you lay out a plan and say, this is how we're going to utilize it, do we need this?
And then I think we do have to work on a pro forma operating budget.
I would want that too, absolutely. This is, again, it doesn't work if it's going to add a mil to the mil rate every year. It just doesn't work. So as, as nice as it would be to have, and everyone knows it would be great to have it, can the town of Durham, with a mil rate where it is now, afford any more? And again, that's why I'm always focused on cost avoidance. If we can get rid of something and put it here, then great. But if you can't trade horses, this, this is, it could be expensive if you're not looking at it the right way.
Well, I'm on record as saying, I don't like that spot for emergency response, but I think we need to fully vet this. So, let's do what we need to do to do that. I mean, we still need to hear from the community.
Let's start with the code compliance person. Let's find out what kind of more information needs to get a budgetary number with the Board of Finance.
Because, you know, if, if this can work and, again, solve another problem, create an opportunity on Main Street, I'm all in. But I, I really want to make sure that we are honest and open with the public about future costs. Because we might all be ready to say, you know what, we're going to live with a little inconvenience and things a little less shiny, you know, to get in there because we really want a community center, we want to, you know, a place for our seniors, we want a place for our kids. I think we have to be a little honest about after a while, we are going to get those requests.
It's, no doubt, it's a bigger building and there's more HVAC, there's more mechanicals, so the probability that more things are going to break.
Yeah.
It's, it's, those with the territory.
Okay. So what I'll do is we'll contact that consultant. We will show him what we have and see if that's a little bit more detail than we had before and what he could work with. I think it's time to, we sit down with Dick McManus again, too, and have him look at this because he might see some red flags or he might, you know, be able to give blessings on some things and red flag on others.
With that said, I'm ready to take my lumps. If you want to open up.
Oh, yes.
Anybody out there?
So, public comment.
Thank you very much, George, for all the work you did in this presentation. I know previously, between the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Education, the discussion of the size of the parcel was, we kind of agreed on the fact, they didn't want to give up any more than they had to. The town didn't want to take any more than they needed. My concern was at the time, not that, but the actual bounds. There's liabilities there, and one of them I consider is the brook. I don't want to inherit that brook. I don't want to inherit any responsibilities for maintenance of Pickett Lane. That's their baby, okay? And it's well-used by both communities for various activities. The other thing is, you know, I like the idea you're going to use first because, you know, they do, they would give us their spin on what they, what they might see in needs of terms of parking and use. I know there was talk of possibly having a coffee shop in there. And if you put in a commercial or a private entity, that was, that was all speculation on the last one. It would not fly. You know what I mean? Those things need to be ironed out. We need to know what we can actually do there and be in conformity with land use regulations. But the big thing is the size of that parcel, or not so much the size, but the limits of the parcel. And I went down there and made some measurements and there wasn't a number kicked around. I don't know where it came from, but five acres. So, 43,560 square feet is an acre. So I went down there with a 300-foot tape and did some measuring and by using the distance of, I think, 20 feet off the brook or whatever it was at the time, I saw some possible conflicts and costs we might incur. And nothing was mentioned about maintenance of the property on the outside. And a big thing would be employees, is it going to require more payroll? Not just a janitor, but, you know, I'm padding on a lot of things. I don't have a problem with putting the ambulance over there.
George, did you talk to Jimmy about the wetlands? And the marked...
In what regard?
There are some marked wetlands, right, Carl? And at the time that the committee met, what were the implications of the wetlands?
We're going to try not to do anything within the wetlands. Stay away from the wetlands, any renovations.
Do you remember basically where those lines are?
A lot of it's basically the north side of the building. Some of it actually came into the building.
Into the building.
And it, it shouldn't be the north side. I mean, I would imagine the wetlands aren't anywhere near the septic, which is behind the building. If you put a septic in wetlands, you got a real...
The north side I'm referring to is the side next to the brook.
The brook, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah. Precom, did you decide it?
Yeah, I know, I mentioned privately to call something about access of the storm drain systems and stuff, and I think you told me at the time there was no conflict or it wouldn't be a dismount or they wouldn't be a dismount on the storm drain.
What, we were looking at it, I don't think it was, right?
Okay. I mean, it was all speculative at the time. Because I don't want them coming back at us later saying, yeah, this, this, and this needs to be done.
Well, there's always...
Because all of a sudden, they're going to say, if we inherited the brook, then once something's on the back.
Well, there's always stormwater implications, no matter what. There, it exists now with the building in its current state.
I'd like to get another copy of this, I could, George.
Francis, your harm was up?
Oh, so, I think you have to take into account that the possibility, because it is a 50/50 possibility, that the ambulance service won't even be in business to pocket by this space. So, with them not being the primary reason and political recommendate, you know, sort of thing to say, we're selling 205, which would happen anyway if they pulled it. We would, you know, be relocating them to things that they had needed, that 205 hasn't been able to have, which, you know, pump rooms, storage, et cetera. So that puts emergency management, the resident state trooper, and DART, and fire marshal being the sort of public safety agencies. I know I have to talk to Kevin, but, you know, assuming there's going to, you're going to move the EOC down there, you're going to come up with some type of space usage, either the senior center or some used space to make this larger, because obviously we know that this is adequate for what we do for fair time, but for if we were to do a full-scale activation, no space.
It's a possibility. It's a possibility.
The other piece is your main reason for saving the houses across the street are every one of these agencies. So we have, you know, a couple million dollar plan for the house to the south for the ambulance and a couple million dollar plan for the house in the north for resident state trooper or emergency management or storage. We also have a building carriage house for the DART trailer and extra vehicles to which we just bought. So, I think this is great, and I think you've done a great job as far as safety and reality that we can cover costs, but I think we have to have a little bit tighter, come to Jesus thought with ourselves about if we're going to go ahead with this and basically, this can't, if there's going to be a temporary solution to fix the problem we're there, that's great. But be prepared that if you're going to want to save the houses and then move ambulance over to 205 or build a second floor on the firehouse to accommodate these offices that was originally in our, you know, our new plan, that we're going to come up with the public safety complex, fire marshal and, you know, emergency management, a larger EOC, we're all part of that, you know, come back and give us a better firehouse design and we'll restructure the egress for the larger apparatuses and, you know, and the other apparatuses that we bring in. So I just ask that, this is a great starting point to talk to ourselves holistically about what we're going to do in the next 10 to 15 years. We have to do something immediately for ambulance if they're going to stay, but if it's going to go to a combined department, this blows that all out of the water.
And I talked to Robbie about that yesterday, just for the writer. His feeling, and again, this is his personal feeling, it doesn't represent the entire fire department, but he wouldn't expect any more than what he's calling a carriage house on the existing fire department, which is basically an add-on to the north side only, continues to the building. The question was, what do you think about the houses? They're residential properties. My statement of a square peg in a round hole from day one is, if you take a residential structure that you have and it's, it was free, and now we basically have to tear them down, rebuild them into something they were never designed to be, keep the facades to make it look old, and call it a nameless apartment or resident state trooper, I mean, part of this concept is no, that goes away. What we can do to the houses, we can do minimum upgrade to it. And when I say minimum, treat it more like a house. You can maybe rebuild it from the ground up, stick frame construction, and leave it banked and use it for storage. You put people in there, it becomes a commercial enterprise. You've got the emergency lighting, you've got the egress issues, you have all this stuff that an existing commercial building doesn't necessarily have those fallbacks. So you have an offer of someone giving you a commercial building versus taking a residential building, converting it into a commercial building by basically knocking it down and rebuilding it. And some of the original estimates, just on the ambulance building alone, was $1.3 million for one structure. So, last time we looked at that firehouse, it was a $7 million building, and I think what Robbie is saying is, we don't need that. All we need is a bag.
Right. My point is, you're repurposing the people that are going to house those buildings. So why wouldn't we redo, redesign the whole process, get rid of the residential concerns about brand-new buildings going up, being too close? You know, yeah, the historic district is going to have, you know, a small cow, but the bottom line is, we get rid of the buildings that we're not going to maintain well, we're not good stewards of maintaining buildings. And I think that if you're going to do this, you're going to have to look at it holistically on how it affects where we go forward.
And I, I don't know if I want to say it out loud, but there are ways around through state requirements that you can go within a historic district and you can actually, an historic district doesn't want to hear it, and I'm almost, I feel bad to even say it out loud, but there are workarounds to knocking those buildings down if so need be.
The only thing I'd ask is, if you're going to come up with a space, ship the bays and build a space that's larger to accommodate EOC, if you're going to decide that that's going to be something you're going to utilize personally, you know, that would be a little tough sell for me, but I trust Kevin and Jack since they're, they're going to have the scooters and emergency management, that we know that we need a larger EOC space for regional activations. We're usually the lead on a lot of localized emergencies and, you know, we're not going to build a second floor of the firehouse in the near future. So that's, you know, I just think that if you're going to build something, at least have some type of larger space to be able to...
So, my question a couple weeks ago was, when this concept was broached, we're all, these are all hypotheticals, all right? So what if we have a combined department? What's the, what's the feeling of the fire department if they are going to be turned into a fire, rescue, EMS department with this plan? Are they going to turn around at that point in time and say, thanks, I know you built the bay down there, but, you know, this is unmanageable with the separation, we need everybody under the same roof? And I'm seriously, I'm asking that question as a layperson.
Today, I know it's a hard sell, but if we, we're in the process of community, but we want to have a rescue... to have a rescue division with 10 medically trained members, probably they'll be thinking of the R1. Those are the two shoes that have to drop in order for the maples to see that this is where it's going. Our medical calls are already forcing us there. You know, EMS passed four calls in the last six days where we had a response. This is not going to, and I think that that's something that we are being pushed into that direction, not because of internal stuff. People getting sick and needing care, needing medical care is increasing dramatically.
I get the R1, but what about the ambulance?
So the ambulance today, the fire company would not take over transport ambulance. That's not something the fire company wants. The officers are voice that. Membership is voice, they're willing to, the medically trained membership are willing to do an increased number of calls for R1.
Right.
Do a lot of it already. The R2 is a big sell simply because, you know, you're, you're all taking time out of your time downs and things like that, just to do what we do. And doing ambulance and transports and that's something we literally have to be dedicated to now for a year.
I agree, and that's what Robbie conveyed to me yesterday about they're looking at one side and not the other. And that's what the management or leadership voted on. So the ambulance component to the fire company, I don't see that happening.
Well, it's not going to happen until it goes paid.
Correct.
Then it will happen.
Or you basically have it housed and it's a commercial service. But this would accommodate that commercial. I'm just saying that commercial service probably isn't where you need, you know, well, maybe with the assisted offices and that. And you could probably, with the commercial service, just many commercial services from the state have smaller spaces where the paramedic and ambulance are parked there for the day and they have small ready room, laundry room, and that's it. I just think we have to correct that sort of hard reality.
And the thought again was that it makes it an easier sell. If you're looking at taking out a building that's 31,000 square feet, you don't need it all. You better use it. To cut part of it off would cost you more than it would to knock it down. So if you really had to solve, and, and commercial leasing or usage, I don't think that fits either. So if we can utilize it and we have something for free, can we avoid something else? And if we can't, we can't. But that, that to me is how I approached it, saying, if I don't want to do a $7 million project over there and want to, what can I do to combine? How do I save money and does it work? And if it works, great, and if it doesn't, then again, you got to pass.
Jack?
So, you know, when you think about emergency vehicles, you may have a field, you're thinking of emergency vehicle leasing. That's, that's only half the problem.
Right.
A volunteer agency, you have anybody coming in, possibly down Picket Lane. And last year, I'm just using this as an example, we had a call come in and it said, the original dispatch said, there was cardiac arrest of a two-year-old child with dolphin disease. Do you know how fast people are driving to get that grid? They are flying on those special, those calls just set something off when you're talking about pediatric. You see people going, you know, we're not supposed to do it. We all know that, right? But there's some calls that are just, just you're like, I don't get it. And they're going to go down that road and something could happen. Really, I think sometimes these calls are just so bad that it makes people get tunnel vision. And tunnel vision is when people get hurt. So it's best sometimes to keep that away. Now, a commercial service that's there and staffed all the time is different. If people aren't coming in through that building, well, you might be on something because you won't have to be down Picket Lane to go up and you're there. So that's one thing. The next thing is communication between the two organizations. If you had, to put them all in one complex, you have the ability to use the same meeting rooms and the same bunk rooms. But it doesn't make sense to have fire company at corn school bunking in a snowstorm to just truck to the store up to the firehouse to get a fire engine and then go to the club. We would need to stay at the firehouse with our other guys. So that bunk room would only be for that. So there's, and I think you did a lot of work, and I think this is a very, very good cost-effective plan for the building of emergency services. I don't know.
The bunk room theoretically was also if the town crew needed it for overnight, I mean, things of that nature.
And the same thing would apply, right? So now we got to put a few
The equipment would be parked outside the building, basically.
Instead of in the stall.
Before you, Rick, Sue, you had something?
Well, with a couple things, but the carpet idea for the gym, if you ask Jen Holland who taught, does that in there? That's been the favorite place that she's worked as far as quality of the floor, the sound and the dynamics, which surprised me, but I have a conversation with her about it. So I'm going to rule out the carpet. The, the need is now for park and rec. If you go to yoga now on Monday nights, we're having to move all the furniture. We're at capacity and they might be turning people away. I know I decided not to do Mondays this round because there's so many people in there. It's not even pleasant anymore, bumping people on. So I'm going to touch that gym as far as you mentioned putting across the door there. I would not, that's one of the biggest assets of that building. But you don't need it for basketball because we've got a lot of gyms that you could use in the schools.
Roger, you had something?
I guess for first, for both, I think it's amazing. Obviously it's a little tweaking, but I think it's amazing. I do want to remind you guys that Tom, John, Laura, all before election, basically agreed that they put two houses next to the fire department in a dumpster. So, I mean, I still think, let's get those two properties taken care of. Let's focus on the fire department, whatever they need for some sort of renovation or addition. And then obviously, you know, give full information to the community, which is fine. If the corn's going to be 1.3, what's going to cost for the fire department? Can we actually do this for $2 million and save 5 million? God, I mean, we all need to accept. I think George's plan is amazing. You guys all know for five years, Dick Porter and I wanted to put the ambulance at corn stool. I'm not saying that that is the best place for it, but it makes sense with what we've got going on. So I think it's a great proposal to start with and let's keep building on.
And again, it's not the sequence that I would prefer, but if someone comes out and says, it's free, but I need an answer quick. You know, the focus to me wants to be public safety first and foremost. I'd love to do the firehouse first and maybe we roll it together if it does make sense.
But to your point, we would be fools to go up that building.
I think so, I think so.
100%.
I walked it again today and I'm looking around going, oh my God, I mean, it's amazing.
Carl?
I, great concept, a lot of work put into it. I have some reservations with some of the costs, actually, if I'm going to make a relationship. Once the code looks at it, I think there may be some, different with everything you see. But I would really, myself, I'd like to see all the emergency services on Main Street for as quick access to respond to any situation rather than be down the private load, private road, a dead-end lane on the backside of the building. That's my comment for now.
Marilyn?
Now, I just wondered what the cost of keeping, renting the commercial facility down at the, where the community center is. Has, has that been considered into all of this?
So that, that's a cost that will get rolled into the operating budget, right?
Yeah.
One, so that's about 56, 60, 60,000, 65,000 a year. If we move the resident trooper out of this office, it would be a savings of $2,400 a year. Those are the costs that could get supplanted and, you know, transferred over to an operating budget. Maggie?
I'm sorry, everybody's been whispering about, are you moving there?
That was my idea.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is all, this is all made, this is all made. She doesn't, she doesn't know anything about that.
No.
But my attitude was
The first selectman will not be moving outside of the town hall.
Somebody wants to be there to greet people. So if you have existing staff, if you can put some existing staff people over there, so there's always someone in the building, you don't have to hire someone to always be in the building.
Yeah, the building needs to be staffed as, as long as it's open to the public, right? If it's not open, it doesn't need to be staffed. It is my opinion that while it's being used, there should be a janitor there. That's too big of a building for any one of us to be in charge of a program and then something go wrong and then what do you do? So that's just, you know, something to consider and it's, it's my opinion. It's hard enough being here and having something go wrong and not having somebody to call and be, and to take care of it right away. In terms of how many people will be permanently down there, the original concept was recreation and social services would have office space down there. That being said, one of the things that I hear from Middlefield is, is that it's very difficult from a management perspective to have town hall entities in two different buildings. And from a management perspective, I think anybody would say that is problematic. Could, could challenges be overcome? Absolutely. But I would say limited, you know, office space with, that should have some direct oversight, the better. The fire marshal isn't there all the time, emergency management not there all the time, doesn't need, you know, day-to-day oversight. So again, for discussion, right? Marilyn?
Has the board event said a time limit?
Yesterday.
They wanted an answer by the end of this month.
But, but they also understand
This month of March?
Yep. It was February, but we extended it to March, so.
Thank you.
But they, they want an answer and that's why I'm trying to scroll down to see what are all the steps that we're going to need to have in place in order to go to the town meeting to reference. Rick, you had one more comment?
Yeah, it brought my attention from somebody that has a lot of experience in land use. And they brought up the question of if, because it's a two-headed axe for actually, that people endure because if the school system wanted to do something later and they went before the land use council and they didn't, and they already carved out a piece of land, they got something less than what they had before. It would kind of limit them. And I don't know what they have in the future coming down the pipe, but I don't want to have a poll of a number about they needed more land because they needed this, that, the other. It's not the most open and accessible branch of our local government. It's the most expensive branch. Like, and if they're not cooperating with town government, I think they'll last long. Apparently they are, but they're better if they're elected. We got six numbers there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody have a chance? Move to adjourn, thank you.